Actual meeting agenda, and that's where you'll have time for public input. And jumping into the first item tonight is item A1, which is confirm appointment of Thomas Wolf to the position of police chief, and Mayor Wheeler is here to present. Welcome, Mayor.
Well, good evening, Council President, Council members. So in front of you, you have the agenda item to confirm the appointment of interim Chief Wolf to Chief of Police of City of Bremerton. And in the attachment, it'll talk about the, some of the, obviously, the compensation, which is part of the approval process. And I will stand by for questions.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So we're open for council discussion. Councilmember Younger.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, I'd like you to describe the recruitment process for this position.
Okay, so this was an appointment, an internal appointment. And it was based on several qualifications that I felt, some I felt would be, could not be replicated. One was the demonstrated loyalty to the department. One was the deep knowledge, institutional knowledge of the Bremerton Police Department. Personal observation of performance under really tremendously challenging conditions. And with the, with, with the new legislation coming forward and the 13 new laws that we are charged and fully committed to honoring the intent of, as well as at the same time maintaining the, the strong professionalism that we have all come to enjoy and the strong public safety program that we have in place.
Was there a vacancy announcement? And so how many applicants did we have?
Again, there was, this was an internal promotion.
Okay, no vacancy announcement, no applicants. Okay, next question I have is, what is the selected person's salary going to be? I can turn you to page five of the packet, and I have a question, Matt. I'd like to know what is the applicant's, I won't say the applicant, the appointee's salary going to be?
Okay, let's get to the, we've got Charlotte Nelson HR here is going to get into some of the technicality, the technical aspect of the compensation package. So Charlotte, you ready to go?
Yep, I need to pull that up real quick here. But what it is, is 10% above what he's making as a captain.
Okay, so I'd like to know what the salary is going to be.
Okay.
Again, I can turn you to page five of the packet. It says $176,372.06. This is section three compensation, part A. There's, shall begin at step five, the police management pay schedule. I assume, or what, what is the dollar amount of step five, the police management pay schedule? That's not the chief of police step five pay schedule, is it? Or is it, that's in the packet?
Yeah, that's the police captain's pay schedule.
Okay, well, we don't have that, so I would like to have that, so I can do the math, because I was looking at the police chief, and then the math didn't work out. So could we have the police captain step schedule? And does that only go up to rate five? I would assume the appointee is at the highest rate right now.
It only goes up to step five, but then they also have 9% longevity on that. I'll email it to you right now.
Yeah, please. I was just curious as how the dollar amount was arrived at. I would also like to see, we had a problem before in the compensation packet with the previous police chief. We're at an impasse, and I recall that I had to negotiate as council president with Roger Louvich, our then city attorney, a contract that was acceptable to the council. And then it was ratified. I would like a copy of that contract, so I can compare it to this one. That's all I have at this point. I'm waiting for further questions. Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll go on to Councilmember Denny. Quinn, you're muted there.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, and welcome Captain Wolf. Yeah, I, I kind of had some follow-up questions that were similar to Councilmember Younger's. I guess I would just like to know what the 9% longevity plus the 10% is? It looks like there's about a 19% increase above where the scheduled rate is. And if you could just help me understand what those two numbers really mean, especially the longevity.
I need one second to get that agreement.
And Ms. Nelson, while you're doing that, I guess I'll just address Mayor Wheeler. Is there, could you just kind of let the council know the rationale for not opening the vacancy? I know you have the option of appointing, but I would assume you had the discretion to open it up as well?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, besides the qualifications that I named those earlier, the, in this time, in this time, in the city of Bremerton, I feel it is extremely important, if not vitally important, we maintain continuity and consistency with, not only with the past police practices that we have developed through the years, leading into the WASPIS certification that only 20% of the agencies in the state have, but also the immersion into understanding the new law, the new 13 new bills. And not just, not just as a understanding, but in leading, in bringing the education and the training to Kitsap County. And we are, we are in definitely new uncertain times. And it doesn't mean they're, they're bad times, but I believe they need to be navigated with experienced people. And this is not the time to, to go out, try to find something different and experiment, or even, or even take a chance, when we actually have a qualified individual here in the department who can maintain the continuity and the stability of a well-respected department, and one that's ready to lead into the, continue to lead into the future with the new legislation that's come forward. I felt it was important for our department, all of our officers who will be in the field doing this work, that we, we get the stability going right now, and not create uncertainty over what the council or myself might be looking for, when I already know what we need, and we have it right here.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. And just for a follow-up, just for my understanding, when you say new legislation, can you let me know, are there new criminal statutes to be interpreted? Is there something on the civil end, what's going on? I'm sorry, I don't know that.
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to put, we're going to put interim Chief Wolf on the, on the stand here, and
yeah, to answer that, and by the way, nice to meet you, Quinn. The House Legislature has brought in Police Reform Acts. And the way it looks is in the form of about 13 different bills that touch law enforcement and how we do business, and how we're being directed to do business. The good news is, a lot of the changes that are being mandated, we were already in front of and doing. Like, for instance, very restrictive pursuit policy. Bremerton has practiced that for a very long time as a best practice. The LVNR, or no chokeholds, over a year ago, we banned those ourselves. The areas that are tricky are in the social, have this gap in service, where someone calls 911 and go, our law enforcement. And the legislature has said, you know, we, we don't want you, law enforcement, involving yourselves in things that are not criminal. And so there's a lot of community caretaking, there's unintended consequences. We understand the intent behind it, and Bremerton Police Department is doing everything we can to uphold that intent. But as Kylie will tell you, because we've been working with her nonstop since she came on, the law, words are mean, they have meaning. And when you write it into a law, you can have an intention, you can have a theory, but then the actual practice is very different sometimes than the theory. So what we have to do is navigate that right now, and keep our officers on the straight and narrow, and keep them engaged. And the number one priority in all of our citizens listening, what I want to hear is, if, if you're in danger, if you're not safe, we're coming. You know, peace and safety, we're going to take care of, you know, and protect human life. That's our number one goal always, and it always will be. So that hasn't changed. From there, it's a very long conversation, and probably very boring to get into all the details of it, but I'm happy to sit down with any of you at any time and go through all this with you. And I think in the future, we plan on doing some, sit down with the community and, and talk through a lot of this. Because I, I think one of the things that got left out was the community didn't know this was coming. So a lot of people are kind of caught off guard.
Excellent. Thank you, interim Chief Wolf, and I would love to be a part of that. I think bridging police and community is, is extremely important. And I'm glad to hear that the Bremerton Police Department was already ahead of some of the things that the legislature was contemplating. So I'm not sure if Ms. Nelson has information for me, otherwise I'll, I'll give it back to President Gorman.
I'm ready. So your, your question was on the pay schedule, and how that works? Okay, that I just sent out, but the way it works, it says step five, a police management pay schedule plus 9% longevity. That is what he's already getting. And then if promoted, that 10% would go on top of that. So I can tell you what those amounts are prior to the 10%, if you'd like.
Okay, so I'm understanding that the 9% longevity, is that, like, maybe it's a term of art I'm not familiar with? Is that for being retained for a certain amount of time? Is that?
It's based on your years of service.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Younger, did that answer your question? I knew you were waiting on, on an answer from Charlotte, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, but I look forward to seeing the email after the study session's over. Thanks.
Okay, so next we'll go to, was that Charlotte?
I just forwarded it to the city council email.
Excellent, thank you. The next we'll go to Vice President Dawgs.
Thank you, Council President. So my conversation has nothing to do with the individual that we're, that is going for this position. So Chief Wolf, it has nothing to do with you. I have utter faith in your work that you do with our department. I've seen you working. But some of the questions I have is, I guess my big, one of my big concerns is, as Chair of the Racial Equity Advisory Committee, is that we as a city are not open up applicant positions to a broader population. And I say that most of our, and we have no say in that as a council, but most of our previous job openings with directors has been appointments with current employees. And so I don't have a problem with that. I, I totally get hiring within and promoting within. But my concern is that we're not putting, we're not giving ourselves an opportunity to bring in fresh eyes or other people to at least apply for the positions. The last time we did that was a previous fire chief and a police chief, and they were both great assets to our community. So I understand where we're coming from, Mayor, as far as the policies and coming into place. But could it be possible that another, if I was open it up in a broad sense, that any police chief would know these coming in, if they're already from the state of Washington? Mayor, questions to you, Mayor.
Mayor, Mayor, you're muted.
Yeah, the part about, and I do want to, we can, we can talk at any time, and it might be a roundtable, it might be part of a retreat where we talk about internal hiring practices. But in general, I want to separate this promotion from all others, and us to focus on the qualifications of Chief Wolf. And, you know, I mentioned it to Councilmember Younger, Councilmember Dennehy, the reasons behind the need for continuity, the reasons why I'm confident in Chief Wolf, the unique qualifications Chief Wolf has of leading a department, and as a command, as a member of command staff, and now as an interim chief, has led this department to be one of the top agencies in the state. And that's, and that's just based on being one of the few that have a WASPIS certification. When you have that, when you have all of the other qualifications that, that a dedicated employee in the city has, institutional knowledge, which is irreplaceable, the determined or demonstrated loyalty, irreplaceable. So we know, we know what we have here today, and we also know what we need today. That the timing is right, the fit is correct, to maintain continuity, stability, in some, some very turbulent times that we're in. This legislation is not something to be taken lightly. It's there to improve and change how we do business, how law enforcement does business. But we also have to navigate this and maintain public safety while we're working together with our legislators, interpreting the law, and working with our, our very valuable people that are the actual force on the streets, doing the work on our behalf and keeping us safe. So no, there is no other person qualified in the state to do this, to do this job with all of those things I just mentioned. Continuity, stability, the workforce needs it in these turbulent times. And we have the person here to do that.
My apologies to the council and everyone. I kind of swayed off the agenda packet. Sorry, that was my bad. So with that in mind, I've seen a mass amount of emails coming on behalf of Captain Wolf. I think I've counted, we have 11 that are in favor of Captain Wolf moving forward, and we have one no moving forward. So definitely glad to hear from our citizens. Definitely will be looking forward to hearing more about this next week with our community. But I'll, I'll wait for further questions. So thank you, Mayor.
All right, next we'll go to Councilmember Simpson.
Thank you, Council President. Now, I, I think this is an important decision that we need to make. Picking, picking the leader of our, of our law enforcement agency is something that we should absolutely take seriously. This person will represent the, represent our agency to the community, and will be the, be the spokesperson for, for the rank and file, and will be able to lead and direct, lead and direct the rank and file to help keep our community safe. And it's absolutely important, and it's something that we absolutely need to weigh heavily on. So what, what I would, I would wonder, now, the mayor had mentioned the legislative intent behind this. And I know that, that, that our current applicant knows, understands the legislative intent, because he's the one that's going to have to enact it, and is doing, doing that right now. And I was curious as to what, what the mayor thought the legislative intent was behind these 13 new pieces of legislation that are, are state to put forward, so that we can have a better understanding of what his intent is behind putting, putting forward this applicant.
Yeah, the, the biggest, one of the biggest challenges that we're going to face is creating the new, the new determination of when to step, step back and let undetermined agencies come in who provide mental health services or other types of de-escalation services, and making that decision on when is a, when is a life safety threat, a public safety, a property threat, and when could, when could another type of individual come in? And so making these assessments a big deal, because that determines whether we stay, whether law enforcement stays in the area, or they leave. And so what that requires is some extra training, extra understanding of the law, continual communication with the attorney, with the Attorney General's Office, who just, has just put out some recent clarification. And it's going to be a full-time job. And the intent, though, has to be, the two, Councilmember Simpson, the two most important things to me is honoring the intent, working with the legislators, working with the Attorney General's Office when they come down with new, with new clarification, and ultimately, every single day, all day, keeping the public safe. There, that is the number one, the number one goal. And so, you know, Captain, and now soon to be chief with council, with your approval, of course, is, is fully immersed, briefed, and with the 13 laws, can go into greater detail for you. It's a, these are, it's not, I mean, Councilmember Simpson, you know this. It's not easy when you have 13 new laws to, and you're out in the street making split-second decisions that sometimes have the ultimate consequences. And so this is not the time to experiment or, or look for something that's, might be there when you already have it in your, in front of you. And we'll discuss, we can discuss all these laws at depth anytime.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your opinion on this. And it is a grave decision that we're making. We do have, we do have a good applicant. And it's important that, that our first consideration be public safety and enforcement of the law. That's, that's the important, and it is the intent behind the law that needs to, that needs to be brought forward. And if, that is why I asked if you had a clear, concise vision of what this intent is. The idea is that we don't hire a chief that's going to interfere with our officer's ability to actually make decisions and, and plug into our legislators. The idea is that we, that we hire a chief who will fully support our, our, our rank and file, who will be, be the spokesperson for our agency, and will be able to clearly enact guidance that is given that through our legislature without, without having to interact with them directly. That's, that's our job to do, as legislators and as a mayor, to interact with our, with our state legislature and make sure that they're not making laws that just don't make sense. So my challenge is to make a good decision about this, and I challenge the rest of the council to make a good informed decision. We're getting a lot of, a lot of information from our public about whether or not to, to decide, which way to decide on, on this particular applicant. And that opinion weighs heavily with everything that we do. Thank you.
President Gorman, just really quickly, if I could, our law enforcement agency is a respected subject matter expert. And we, and we will be weighing in, and it will be Captain, soon to be Chief Wolf, upon your confirmation, who will be leading and providing that, that conduit from law enforcement to the legislature, and, and to the other decision makers from a, you know, from that body. So please know, I will be leaning heavily. This requires a great deal of trust, which has been earned over the years. And so we'll be working together on this.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, next we have, we're getting into a second round of questions. So I just wanted to give anybody an opportunity to chime in that has already had an opportunity to spoke, speak. And I see Councilmember Sullivan. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Gorman. So the, yes, I agree with Councilmember Simpson. This is a very large, a very big decision to make for our city. We've had to do that one other time with former Chief Burchett. And at least while I was on the council, I should say, we've had to do it a number of times. But I think our, our, I, so one, let me first off, say right off the bat, Captain Wolf has my utmost respect, utmost respect as an individual, as a law enforcement officer, as a community advocate. I've been to a packed meeting, unfortunately not as many as I would like to attend, but the one that I specifically is in my mind, everybody came up and asked Captain Wolf questions, and he was there for the community. On the council meetings, Captain Wolf has gone into length on issues in the past, and a community member through public comment would make, ask questions. And Captain Wolf is the first to say, if you need further information, I will speak to you personally. I admire that in a public servant. And as such, I believe that the continuity we would continue to have with Captain Wolf moving into the chief position, and the, and the times that we're moving into, we've been in in the last two years and are moving forward into, needs the type of leadership and the community person, as well as the institutional person that Captain Wolf represents. As the leader, I would love to see and have seen push, sent down to the rank and file, his leadership, his direction. And I believe that while we, the city grows and has a concern with diversity, I believe also that continuity through the leadership that Captain Wolf will provide is going to be paramount to the legislative intent and the law enforcement ability to meet that legislative intent and still keep safety, public safety foremost, will only benefit from Captain Wolf being made chief of police. And the, speaking to Councilmember Simpson's comments and Councilmember Dawgs, Dawgs' comments in regards to the letters of support that we've received, I, they are just outstanding, from all groups, of all levels of individuals out in our community, pastors, individuals, it, it just goes on. And I am, and to my knowledge, the only announcement that was made to this, and I could be wrong, is the notice that went out from the city. And Mayor, was there additional notification, notices that you were appointing Captain Wolf? Other than what I've seen on the city?
This is the, one of the most watched appointments that has been coming our way. I have worked with our community for a while. The community knew this was coming, and especially since I had interim Chief Wolf, and him and I have been on the, a tour to make sure we've been in front of all communities. They've been waiting for this to happen.
Got it. So that, and, and again, I have to say, I have a bias, because I am very, very honored to know and respect Captain Wolf. So I, I am listening to all of the comments, and if I, if I, and, and the public needs to know, if I, if I heard comments to the derogatory, I would seriously take them into consideration. But I have not seen that. I have not heard that in the years that we've been, I've been on council. So, and that is, I, I just think that Captain Wolf would make an excellent chief of police and would be able to lead this department where it needs to go now, and to into the future. So I will be listening for public comment next week, and continuing to watch the, the letters of support or non-support that comes into the, to the council. So that's just what I would like to say here. So thank you.
All right, next we'll go to Councilmember Dennehy. All right, next we'll go to, uh, Councilmember Dennehy. Actually, uh, let's go to Good Now first. Councilmember Good Now, didn't see your hand up there.
That's because I snuck it right in a moment ago. You know, I, I, I definitely have heard some, uh, folks and, and again, uh. Echoing a little bit of, uh, Leslie's concern about just, you know, making sure, uh, finding opportunities to bring. Uh, more diverse workforce in. And I, um, you know, I do, I think that, um, uh, interim Chief, uh, Wolf. Uh, is a good candidate, and ultimately, it's, uh, you know, the mayor's. Choice on how he wants to, uh, fill this position. There is certainly nothing wrong with a candidate. I think that it's just a very interesting time in policing right now. Um, we have, uh, around the country, we have, uh, police departments that are having a, you know, an exodus of, uh, law enforcement officers. And I think that, um, the, kind of this more stable, steady transition. Uh, for an internal candidate might be a really smart move in this case. And, um, uh, like I said, uh, the candidate seems completely qualified. And, uh, you, you know, we, we, I suppose, as council could look into. Whether or not we require, uh, the administration to do full searches. Uh, for department heads. Um, but, um, you know, ultimately, I think that, uh, you know, this is. This is within the, uh, the way that we have created, uh, for the mayor to fill this position. Uh, we have a, uh, really seemingly exceptionally qualified, uh, candidate. So, um. You know, it's, um, it's checking a lot of boxes. And again, no situation's ever completely ideal, but, um, so. That's all I really have on that. Thanks.
All right, next we'll go to Councilmember Dennehy.
Thank you, uh, President Gorman. You know, interim Chief Wolf, it sounds like you have the, the trust and the backing of, uh. Mayor Wheeler, who I respect, Councilman Sullivan, who I respect, uh, Councilman Goodnow, like. A lot of community support as we've seen through letters. Um, in order for me to, to really vote in, in favor, and I, I don't know you, and I hope authentically, I really do hope that we change that, um, in the future. Um, but I have two questions, um, that, that are really important, I think, at this time, um, in policing. First, um, you know, what is your thoughts on qualified immunity? And number two, um, it, do you believe that individuals who kill unjustifiably? Meaning there's no legal defense of subjective fear of serious bodily harm or death, plus an objective fear that a fact finder can find? If you, if someone is, uh, you know, enough probable cause or enough information. For them to have unjustifiably killed, do you support prosecution and the decision going to a fact finder? Um, you know, Mayor Wheeler said that this is a really important time, and you'll be working with legislative officials, and this will kind of. Elevate your profile, and people will be relying on your thoughts about legal theory. Um, and so I wanted to hear what your thoughts are on both of those are.
Oh, um, so first on qualified immunity. I, I think, uh, maybe one of the best ways to answer that for you is you have a legislature that enacts a law. Uh, and then your executive branch, that's where law enforcement falls under. They ex, they have to execute and carry out that law to the best of their ability. And we seek legal counsel and, and we speak to advisors, but we do our best to follow that law as it's written. If the judiciary at some point then says, well, what you did is unconstitutional. Uh, what we're seeing, and it seems to be kind of a theme, especially in Washington State, is. Well, the legislature is now saying, we would like to hold the executive accountable for the law that they enacted. I, I think when you break it down like that, you start to question, well, wait a minute. You created a law, the legis, the legislative body has full immunity, the judiciary has full immunity. There, if they're acting within good faith, and that's where qualified immunity comes from, are you acting within the law? If you stay within the law, then you're not going to be held accountable directly. Uh, if you remove qualified immunity, uh, what you're saying, you know, basically what we do in law enforcement is. We're being almost held to the standard of perfection. We'll never get there. Uh, we try for excellence in everything that we do, and that is, uh. You know, the standard that we try to continually process and prove, and our department is very good. But certainly not perfect. So when things out there in the real world get really messy and things happen, and they happen very quickly. Uh, we are kind of a, uh, instant replay generation. We watch NFL football and, and we took it away from the referees now, and we, we want to go to the video and. And break it down frame by frame. And in real life, you can't do that. You, if people are acting with good intentions and they're doing their best to carry out the law, uh, you have to support them. And that's part of the next round of legislation that is out there, and it's being, it's, it's being touted. Uh, and I think that if you take qualified immunity away. It's, it would be the same as we're already doing a trapeze act out here every day. And we take great risks, we put ourselves on the line to protect our community, but now you're going to cut the net out from under us. And you're asking us to perform the same, uh, trapeze act that we've always done, but now do it without a net. And I, I disagree with that. I think that our department in particular has a very good track record of holding people accountable. We have, uh, when we've had people doing wrongdoing, we have immediately recognized it. We've brought in outside resources to investigate it, and we have, uh, not only charged them with crimes, but we've terminated people. And, um, somebody talked about, I was reading an article recently about the good old boy system. And Chief Burchett and I, that's, we started out in a good old boy system, and we hated it, and we fought against that our whole careers. And this department, so that you know, uh, and the rest of the council knows, you have a very good police department. The men and women that work for you and serve this city are exemplary. They are amazing what they do day in and day out. Uh, other places are having all kinds of problems, and we're, we're actually doing an amazing job. So, uh, I would like to, uh, if given the opportunity. One of the first things I want to do is keep your department intact for you. You have to have this expertise to stay. Uh, we can't afford to lose that. So I think qualified immunity would be something that takes that down. As far as your secondary question, I'm not sure I completely understood it. If someone unjustifiably shot or killed someone, yeah, they would be held accountable and they would be removed. Um, the best example of that, I, I don't know if anybody's seen this, there's, uh, uh, out of Aurora, Colorado. There was a officer that was, uh, pistol whipping a guy. And everybody, every officer here immediately recognized, oh my God, what is going on here? And not, not one of our officers thought that would be okay. Everybody said, well, one, that guy should be charged criminally, and two, he should be fired. And three, how did he ever get into law enforcement? This disgusts us. Because when that guy in Aurora, Colorado does that, it reflects on us up here. One other thing you need to know about your department, uh, June 2nd. Uh, last year, we had a group of protesters, uh, mixed in with some Antifa, come right to our front doorstep to. Actually start kind of a, I, I, some of them wanted to start more than just a protest. They were going to cause trouble. Our community came out, our Chief of Police went out, we did something different than all the other departments were doing. We didn't put a riot squad out there. We went out and talked to them. We met them where they were at, but our community, our community members, pastors from our, uh, minority churches came out, and they stood with us. And they said, stop, this is different here in Bremerton. And, um, uh, Councilman, uh, Sullivan talked about pact meetings. It's, it's police and community together. And that's something we've got going on here in Bremerton. We cannot lose that. So that's why we're different. That's why we've got to keep that going. Uh, and so that, that is my passion. I have a lot of it. I look forward to meeting with you. And, uh, council, all of you, I want you to feel comfortable with this. If you're not, please get hold of me offline, ask me any question you want. I'm happy to talk to you, uh, and anybody in the public too.
Thank you, and thank you for, uh, answering the second part, which was unclear, but yeah, you, you, uh, waded through my muddiness of answering it. But I want to be super clear on the qualified immunity, so I'm understanding your answer. It sounds like you support qualified immunity as it is. You don't want it to be taken away. I, I guess a, a follow-up to that is, do you believe that there's any way to alter it? Because the way I understand the law is, there's only a violation of the statutory or constitutional rights. If a court has already stated in a prior case that that is a violation, like you can't take into account. New facts, uh, as, as they are presented in a new case.
That's my understanding.
Councilperson. And you don't, and you do not support it, uh, being altered.
I, I think that would be, uh, for law enforcement in general, I think that would be a huge mistake.
Okay, I just wanted to understand your answer. Thank you very much.
Council, uh, President. Yeah, just real quick, um, you know, and so Chief Wolf, like every other, uh, chief and sheriff in the, in the country. Is, is stating that the, where the separation starts to come in is the character, the experience. And the trust to continue operating in that environment, to maintain what we have. If, if we, if we go there, if, if the, if the legislation. If that happens, then what we have is we have different departments, the solid ones, um, have to work through this. The, the ones that are stable, this is where the leadership is tremendously important. And this is how it can get, it can get turbulent, um, because we, we would have to work through that. And this, and so, you know, while, while there's an opinion. The separation is a professionalism, professionalism, the character involved in, in honoring the law. Respecting the law, enforcing the law. And maintaining a police department that still will be at the, the hu, the upper echelon of the departments in Washington State. And so I, I just wanted to make sure that character will be a big one moving forward, continuity, understanding of, of our departments. As we all navigate this. This is a very frank, uh, description of what it'll be like for the police force. And what we'll have to do together, Chief Wolf and I, to make sure you have a, a, a force that keeps you safe every day. And on, and, and stays within that law, if that's, if that's where we're going.
All right, next we'll go with Vice President Downs.
Thank you, President Gorman. Um, I just want to say, uh, Chief Wolf. Um, I too have worked with you for a while. Um, I've participated in, uh, training videos and write-alongs. And so I, I believe in you as an individual, and I wanted to share that information. I also believe in our police department, and I say that, um, because last week we had a citizen mention. Um, about, um, defunding our police department as a council. And I am proud to sit on this council and say that we have not in any way had that discussion. And nor do I think we want to move in that direction. So, um, so on that part, I want to say thank you to our police department. Thank you, Captain, for, or Chief, for your service. Definitely, uh, you are an individual that is going to be great for the city, so I just wanted to share that. If I didn't come in that way the last time, but my question again, um. So, maybe Mayor answers this question. So if by chance, we vote on this, basically the salary package. The higher is already in place, because that's not our purview. So with that in mind, if by chance, the council votes no on this moving forward with the salary package, what happens next?
Well, the, um, so you, you like the candidate, but you don't like the, the, the salary.
Exactly. Well, yeah, well, I'm, I'm just saying, you never know, you know, it's a, you have to win the vote, right? And so you never know what everybody's thinking by next week. So what happens next week if by chance? The vote doesn't happen. I'm just wondering where we are going to go from there.
Well, my number one thing will be to work with, uh, Chief Wolf to ensure continuity and public safety is, is maintained while we, we will just rea. Readdress the, the process. First off, it's understanding why you might vote no. You know, first, I would, we would want to be unders, um, try to understand first, and then hopefully if we didn't communicate something the first time. Uh, we'd get a chance to recommunicate it in a different manner. So I wouldn't close the door on, on a no vote, um, at, that immediately. Um, and then, you know, after learning more, if, if it was just communication, we, we correct it. If it's more, then I, you're, the next path forward then would probably come, become clearer. You know, right now, I, I'm, I'm just kind of moving forward with what we have, which is what I'm presenting to you. Today, Councilmember Downs.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And then so my last, I mean, I, I guess I don't want to make, I don't, not going to ask that question, because I don't want it to seem. Yeah. So anyway, thank you again, Mayor, for this presentation. Cap, Chief Wolf, um, I definitely trust our department in your hands, and we'll see how it goes next week. Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, uh, Chief Wolf.
Thank you, Councilman Dogg. I, I wanted to share, especially with Councilman Dogs, uh, last week I had the honor, I got invited, the mayor did too. Over to a graduation, and it was for young children who were at finance camp. Something I wish I would have gone to, uh, a long, when I was their age. But the, this was aimed at, uh, our minority community. It was, it was so well done. It was just amazing what they did. But here was my takeaway. There was eleven children there, and when they went around and asked them, what do you want to be when you grow up? Three of them said, I want to be a police officer. Uh, so it cares, I want to do one better than that, though. I want a police department that they stay here in Bremerton. They join our police department, and not just join it, but those kids, and I can think of one of them in particular, who was just all day long. He was amazing. He's our future police chief. So that's, I, I'm looking, you know, we, we talk about diversity year after year after year. We don't have a lot of bandwidth here to do recruiting, and there's some things we're going to do to try and make that happen. We want to. We do have diversity in our department. We're very open, uh, to all diversity within our department. But let's make it happen, but it's got to start somewhere. So those, uh, and I have some friends in the community, and, and I've told them, I said. We need to rally around these three, especially, and then any of their friends. And, and let's plant seeds and grow into the future. So if I can't get a kid in college interested in law enforcement, if I can't get a kid in high school. If I can't get them in junior high, I've got these kids in grade school, and let's stay on that. And that's one of the things I want to pass down to everybody, and that is so important. So, uh, in regards to that, that's, uh, I just want to, I know that's near and dear to you, uh, Councilwoman, and. I want you to hear, it's near and dear to us too. It's very important to us. So we will make that happen. Thank you, uh, President Gorman.
Thank you, Captain Wolf. Thank you, Chief.
Now we'll go to, uh, Councilmember Simpson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, and my question's kind of directed at the chief, uh, through you. I know one of our, uh, one of our council objectives is to do more community outreach, and especially outreach to the young. I'm curious if the, if the chief will, uh, will be, uh, pushing the, uh, the department towards, uh, resurrect the cadet program. Or, uh, doing some more community outreach in that way. And additionally, uh, I was wondering if the chief was going to, uh, schedule a citizens academy. So that we can integrate more people into, uh, into our, our, our agency. And, uh, get the, you know, and this kind of goes into the vision for the department down the road. And it, it's something that, uh, that if we're going to do outreach as a council, we do it through our different agencies. And our, uh, our police agency is the largest depart, is one of the largest departments in our city. And, uh, it, it might be something that can help us out, uh, on council. But, uh, I'll leave that for the chief to answer the, answer the questions, please.
Yeah, um, great question, Councilman Simpson. Um, I, I am the product of an internship myself. I had, uh. I'm the son of a police officer, and I never thought about being a police officer. Uh, and as I was finishing up my, uh, first degree, it was, I, I did an internship, and I got introduced to law enforcement. And I've never looked back, and I've never regretted. I think one of the best things we can do, especially non-traditional candidates, is to. one of the best things we can do, especially non traditional candidates, is to get them in under internships and immerse them in law enforcement. So they really understand what it is. That's one of the directions we want to go. Citizens Academy is near and dear to me. That's something that I we threw out, and we're going to get it rolling, and thanks COVID. If anybody can just put a stop to COVID, that'd be great. We got a lot of things we want to do. Some other things we want to do, though, too, is I think that the police chief needs to go out and sit down with every block watch group and say, hi, I'm your chief. What's going on in your neighborhood? Talk to me. That's the kind of level of inter integration we need. The other thing as far as community involvement is, it's not okay for the chief or the captain to be going to community meetings. It's it's got to be the first guy and the last guy in the door has to understand that. So one of the things I'm going to be doing is is our latest hires are going to be coming to pack meetings with us and being introduced. We are encouraging our lower level supervisors to be more and more involved and to stop in. We're we're changing some things up. Everything's on the table. Again. Our 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 ability to do a lot of things right now. One of the things I'm faced with is we're down a lot of people right now. I'm down. Well, I'm down 10 bodies right now. Due to retirements, early retirements, I've got several medical people that are out long term, one long term military. So we're we're doing the best we can, but we gotta, we gotta be able to expand ourselves in a way that we can have that kind of bandwidth, so we can really focus on getting back into the community. One of the things I would pitch, and I pitched the mayor, is we got to get more bike patrols out there. That is in my career, Chief Strand, same exact thing, we both have had the same experience. Having people out on bikes out in our communities, and it's not enough just to have them downtown. They need to be in all the community, get them out everywhere. It really impacts your community. It's amazing what that will do. That one on one connection with officers in each neighborhood. So that's something that we want to grow and and continue to push forward. And we have a lot of change coming at us. In your time in law enforcement, you probably remember one or two law changes. This is 13. I've never seen anything in my 30 plus years like this. It is a mountain of change. For those of you that don't know any police officers, they do not like change. They they really have a problem with change. And so that that's a that's an interesting quagmire that we find ourselves in. But our people rise into this challenge. And then the other thing is, is we have to get out there and educate our people. And talk to our citizens. They need to know what's going on. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Chief. All right, any further council discussions? Go with Councilmember Younger.
Yes, first questions from Mayor Wheeler. Councilmember Sullivan asked a question, which I don't believe was answered. And she mentioned the public outreach, others than that being in our packet. Mayor Wheeler was asked, was there any other efforts? My question, Mayor Wheeler. The people that wrote letters that are in our packet, did you reach out to any of these folks and ask for a letter of support for Captain Wolf?
No, no, these are folks, if if I might explain, and I counsel, I would encourage you. Especially you, Councilmember Younger, to begin integrating yourself into the community, different communities. Where these conversations become a part of your of your representative life. This, there's no secrets. Once you start getting into the and involved in in different parts of our our city. So this this comes pretty quickly. It's it's continual dialogue. It's me talking with the NAACP. It's for for weeks and weeks. It's me checking in, learning what's going on, learn getting the pulse. Counsel, it shouldn't be just me. It needs to be the, I shouldn't say counsel, but Councilmember Younger. It shouldn't be just me doing this. We all need to be doing this. So this, we're not asking these type of questions right now.
Sure, that's great. We should. I agree. We should have more of a public process, and and we should have a council member on a committee in the selection of the next police chief. I've had the pleasure of being on council, working with Mayor Horton, Mayor Bozeman, Mayor Lent, and now you, Mayor Wheeler. And I got to tell you, I think Councilmember Goodell said something about, you know, this is the process. This is abnormal. What's happening in this administration on how we select people with no vacancy announcement and no applicants. Even on the internal side. We have other people in the police department, captains and lieutenants, that aren't even given the opportunity to apply for this position. And the chief police, and and this, by the way, let's get back to the letters real quick. I don't take issue with any of the letters, and I think they're truthful. And I think that the, I won't even say the applicant, the appointee is well qualified for the position. I don't believe a statement that he is necessarily the best qualified, because we haven't considered anyone else. Not one person outside the current appointee. I find that disappointing, especially with all the events that have happened in the past year. And the call for more public process and more community involvement. Normally, normally, when you pick an important position such as city manager or police chief, the community gets involved. They get to meet the top three applicants. They get to interview them. And I know we're in a pandemic, but we could certainly do it by Zoom, and we could have that community involvement. I am very, very disappointed in this whole process. This is nothing new. I've stated for the past few appointees for directors and other positions. And I really think we need to have a competitive process when we pick these positions to lead our city. And I'll have more on that next week. But I'm sorry, you you just struck a note that really angers me. Thank you.
All right, any further council discussion on this item? Not seen any hands. So my take on this, really appreciate all the the robust discussion on this and everybody keeping it, keeping it friendly. I yeah, I thought about this quite a bit, and I think Captain Wolf. I'm sorry. Interim Chief Wolf does an excellent job and is an outstanding candidate for this position. I have no doubt that you'll be able to lead City of Bremerton's police force without any issues. So again, it's going to sound like a broken record separating that from the process. And I too am disappointed in the process. I thought that the mayor has seen or heard feedback from the council that we'd like more diversity in higher end positions, management positions with the city. And we'd like to see the the mayor go out and do more processes. Application processes for for hiring these positions to get more outside candidates. And time and time and again, it's been the same thing where it's an internal appointee, an internal appointee. Mayor, do you know how many appointments you've made to to like directors in the last three and a half years?
No, and and Council President, you know, I mentioned the Councilmember Dowd, so I was, I'm I'm hoping you can just keep focused on the
I'd really like you to have that question. I'd really like you to have that question.
So it's, there's a list of, you know, legal, finance, public works. See, I'm thinking that's, you may have missed one. So again, Council President, I'm, I I would encourage you to just focus on this particular hire, and I would love to sit down in a decent roundtable environment to discuss hiring practices. How how we might better work, all of us work for the city. And instead of, you know, because these are pretty much one way conversations. We make a presentation and we stand by for questions. And we speak when invited. And so I would encourage more of a roundtable at a separate time in general to discuss hiring philosophies. Why it's important to have upward mobility, why it's important to develop leadership internally. How one one promotion leads into four or five more promotions, which with new leadership opportunities for your rank and file. How that helps with recruitment to fill positions down the road. And I'd love to talk with you, all of you about this. And I think there'll be a time we should do that. I'm just, I'm just requesting in these turbulent times, we just focus on this issue at hand.
How difficult is it to to start the hiring process and get external candidates?
Well, we can put it over to Charlotte, but you basically spend three weeks, a month. You you bring in applications. Sometimes you folks travel in this environment, you do Zoom meetings. Sometimes there, you know, you you talk about housing. Is there housing availability up here? There's, there's other things that come into play.
Would you call it moderately difficult, extremely difficult?
No, it's, it's pretty good. If there's, there's not a difficulty to it. It's not a, it's not a difficulty issue. It's more of what would you look for? And to me, if I have continuity, let's just say, for example, let's get back to the chief. And that's the Bremerton Police Department. If you have something in place that you know, and you've come to respect, and you know it through through, you know, verified information such as a WASP certification. If you also have the the inside knowledge of seeing work in the legislative process and the understanding, working internally with our department. See, those are the, I take those seriously. So I I don't know about, I wouldn't call it difficulty. I would call it if you're looking for change, you go outside. If you feel there's not enough experience, you go outside. There's a couple of different reasons you leave, you leave one of your departments. If if you like where you're going and you see talent, and you can, and you can develop talent, then you promote within. And then there's a number of good reasons that I explained previously. So difficulty wasn't a a word I would use. It's a, it's a process with the, and it should have, there should be an intention behind it besides just doing it because we think we should.
Charlotte, would you mind looking up the the department head hires that have happened in the last three and a half years? Is that something that you could do easily, or? You're muted right now.
I'll need to create a report, so it might take a few minutes.
Okay, that's no problem. I I have some more questions.
Well, President, I can tell you that answer.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, Councilmember Younger.
Sure, police chief, police chief, fire chief, assistant fire chief, finance director, public works director. And now police chief again. That's where the top level department ends.
Got it. And I don't remember any one of those going to outside candidates. Is that right?
No, that is not correct. The finance chief, the finance position, there was a process. I was actually on the committee. As far as how that ended up, I think we need to go to executive session, and I could discuss what happened.
The the challenge that I have is that if you think a person is the most qualified, and no one's going to stand up to them, then what's the risk in going to the outside candidate for the opportunity to hire somebody of greater diversity, get a female in there, get somebody of color in there? That's the problem I have, and it I don't know. I don't know why this is happening to our city. But I think that the taxpayers, the 5,000 plus people that I represent, who have told me very explicitly that we don't like this practice of continuing continuing to hire within. I think from a management position, if I was the CEO of the city, if I was in your your seat mayor. I would probably lean towards hiring within, absolutely, because I think that's a good thing to do. But when it comes to such an important position, I don't think there's any fear that anyone's maybe would stand up to to the candidate that you're proposing. I I just don't, it's a struggle for me to understand this. Especially since we've had public comments to this exact issue multiple times. And that's, that's my issue. So when we, I want you to be fully prepared next Wednesday. I think we need objective searches, you know, things that we need to see what's out there. I I wouldn't marry the first person I dated, you know, I dated around, and that has served me not well yet, but but that's, that's what you do. You see what's out there. And again, I I really want to underscore that Captain, or Chief Wolf. Super awkward. I hate that you have to be here listening to all this, but it has no reflection on you. This is a complete reflection on the mayor at this time. Mayor Wheeler?
Yeah, um, I you know, I can I I see where this is is going. And I I don't think it's in anybody's best interest to have a four three vote. These these kind of decisions, probably for the benefit of our city, should be unanimous. You know, so I'll let council, we've, I mean, we've got all, I've got all night. We've got all night. This is a study session. This is where we hash things out. This is not meant, I mean, I, and I don't want to create a wedge between administration and myself and you. And, you know, and so, I mean, I I'm kind of open, I'm I'm open to work with you to remove the wedge. And let's, I'll, looks like you've got some, President Gorman, looks like you've got some other hands up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll open it up to one more round for council, and then, let's see, it's Councilmember Simpson and then Councilmember Denny.
Thank you, Council President. And I'll I'll make my comments quick, because we've been on the subject for quite a bit. It is a very important subject. And we have an excellent candidate that that has been presented forward. However, the question has been raised, should we use this excellent candidate as the rubric to determine how how good of a candidate we can get? And I I would be open to that. I think I think, you know, allowing that, allowing us to show how good of a candidate we have compared to those across the country, I I think, I I'm very confident in in where it will go and how it will turn out. So I am not opposed to that. And I I do do have a question. Does our current candidate possess the the FBI certification for for the chief's position?
No, I do not. In fact, I disagree with that. I believe it's kind of a boondoggle. And I believe it's unethical to send people to the FBI Academy for three months of vacation. I do have a master's degree in criminal justice, which was heavily related in research. And I also have the Northwest Command College certification.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Denny.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I'm brand new, so I don't have the historical knowledge of the other appointments, but I'm I'm catching up quickly, obviously. I think, you know, again, interim chief wolf, this has nothing to do with you. It's more about the process. So please separate those comments for me. You know, going off of President Gorman's statement about, you know, diversity. You know, maybe we got, we'll get a female, maybe a person of color, you know, of of course, you never want to hire based on immutable characteristics. Obviously, that's against Title VII of the Civil Rights Law and while that. But I I do think, you know, going forward, I want to throw my voice in support of at least creating an equal opportunity for all of those who are interested in a position to apply. And I think, you know, as good intentioned and as deep knowledge as Mayor Wheeler, you might be about, you know, who would be best to take over the reins, you know, you might be absolutely correct. But I think the optics of it can sometimes be problematic. And that's where, you know, this kind of systemic oppression is. And that's where, you know, this kind of systemic oppression is, can sometimes manifest itself. You know, you've got to think about who had access to be able to attend certain schools or get masters in criminology and kind of rethink as a society how we can cast wider nets to make sure that we're inclusive of a lot, a lot of other folks. I probably have, you know, no doubt that interim chief Wolf would have come to the top of the list and been considered, you know, in those top candidates and probably would have prevailed, but I think making sure that the system itself is equitable and at least equal opportunity to apply is really important. And so I wanted to just throw my voice behind there. And, and again, I'm, I'm brand new to this and I don't know the, the, the deep knowledge or reasonings behind, but, but just based on, on what I'm hearing, I think it could alleviate some, some problems in the future if, if you entertain that. Again, as the head of the executive, you have the right to kind of choose how you want and then we'll confirm, but it, it does sound like it would be beneficial in the future for you to consider that.
So. Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, I, I see where, okay, and I see where this is going and I, I hear you, Council. If, you know, I have to talk it over with, with the interim chief Wolf. And we, you know, this, this doesn't need to go next week for, you know, and have this kind of conversation. We probably need to work together a little more closely on this. And so I'm confident Chief would, would come out ahead in a, in a competitive search. I am, I'm, I am open to bringing a council member into an interview or application process. If you, and I, I'm hearing this from you right now. President Gorman, I, you know, I'm kind of, you know, out of respect for the, the interim chief and of course, police department, I'm, I'm open to working, working with you on this to, to, to bring a unanimous, or at least as close as we can get to unanimous support for this position. And so it, you know, there's, there's ways to do it. You know, and, and again, this is what study sessions are about. And so we're, we're, we're working to these type, these, these issues. What would probably happen is, and I'll be frank with you, is if we, if we all decide that there needs to be a more deliberate process with more council involvement and possibly even public involvement, then I would ask for an extension of the interim and we would map out that process. And I'd be open to sitting down with a council member to, to do that. So, you know, let's, and I'm, I'm here to gauge, this is what study sessions are all about. I'm here to gauge whether we're on, if that's the path you're, you're wanting to go rather than just putting it up to a vote next week and, you know. President Gorman, and I would even, I would even invite, you know, Councilmember Younger to sit on that, that panel since we, you know, it's, of course, and it could, we'll just see, thoughts?
I think that's, that's the, my desired pathway forward. I appreciate you, you being open to that, Mayor. And I would, and we'll open this up to the rest of the council for, for them to chime in on their thoughts, but I would, I would like to see Councilmember Denny on that panel if it, if it does exist. I think questions he asked tonight were really thoughtful and smart. Not that yours weren't, Councilmember Younger, but, but I really liked his line of questioning.
If that was a question to me, Council President Gorman, no worries, there's nothing precluding you from having two council members. Councilmember Denny did have excellent questions and I'm not suggesting I'd be the second. I don't think we need to decide that tonight. We have a former deputy sheriff also on the council as well. I'm just suggesting that Councilmember Denny is a new city council member and it would, that's a choice I would think we should have at least two. Usually these committees have not only the mayor and a council member, but another department head and nothing precludes the mayor from having a respected community member on it as well that has subject expertise in this law enforcement. So I, I would suggest, Councilmember, President Gorman, that you work out the mechanics with Mayor Wheeler at a later time.
Yeah. My goal would be, I wouldn't be, we wouldn't be pointed with each other. And next time we bring this forward, we'll, administration and council will be collaborative and we can, obviously, we've gotten a lot done together, even, we have, we have, we have accomplished a lot together and I foresee us doing that again and so, and continuing that. So.
Yeah, so I guess, instead of going to each council member and kind of asking them their thoughts, is what the, does anyone not want the mayor to do that, what he proposed, the, go into an external panel with a council member and, and extending the interim chief position that Captain Wolf? Is anybody opposed to that? I'm not seeing anybody opposed. And if you'd like to speak up, please feel free, but Mayor, that's the direction I'm seeing, so.
Yeah. Well, very good. We'll, we'll get an agenda item together for you, 1st of September. It'll be, or end of August, ready for action, 1st of September for our next extension. We'll, we'll sit down, possibly at the study session, talk about the mechanics and let's, yeah, let's move on.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for the discussion on that. And then now we're going to move on to item.